One, we'll start with the flag of leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It does not appear as though we have any announcements tonight, so we'll start with proclamations. We'll start with the Week of the Young Child. We have Councilor DeLonge to read that for us.
Whereas the Early Learning Alliance Network in conjunction with the National Association of Education of Young Children are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April tenth to sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And whereas these organizations are working to promote and inspire high-quality early childhood experiences for our city's youngest citizens that can provide a foundation of learning and success for children in Fishers, Indiana. And whereas teachers and others who work with or on behalf of young children birthed through age eight who make a difference in the lives of young children in Fishers deserve thanks and recognition. And whereas public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to young children's futures and to the prosperity of our society, therefore, I, Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fishers, do hereby proclaim April tenth through sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, as the Week of the Young Child in the City of Fishers, and all the residents are encouraged to celebrate it.
Thank you. We now have Councilor DeReimer to read Arbor Day proclamation.
City of Fishers proclamation, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska. And whereas the City of Fishers has expressed its intent to participate in the Tree City USA program following standards outlined by the Arbor Day Foundation. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and the beauty of our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Therefore, I, Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fishers, do hereby proclaim April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, as Arbor Day. Sign the twenty-third day of February, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you. We're now on to presentations and service awards. We have Chief Gephardt to present awards.
Thank you, Council, for getting back to this routine. I think it's nice to recognize our law enforcement. Lieutenant Norm Tate, could you step forward, please? Tonight, we'd like to recognize Lieutenant Norm Tate for his service to our communities. Twenty-five years of law enforcement protection. Norm was hired in nineteen ninety-six as a patrolman, quickly ascended to sergeant in two thousand, onto lieutenant in two thousand and two. He's currently assigned to the Support Division, where he's charged with the safety of all our community at our city's events as he works with the Fire Department and the EMA and so forth. Norm is also an instructor for our agency, most notably a firearms instructor and a fitness instructor for us. He's a coach, he's a good, proud father and husband of Jenny, and Norm, thank you for your service. We appreciate it.
Moving on, we have the Mayor's Youth Academy presentation.
Come on up, guys, as I introduce you up to the podium here. Just a little background, each year, we ask high schoolers, juniors, and seniors at Hamilton-Southeastern, as well as the other schools here in our community like Alhuta, to step forward any students that might be motivated or inspired by public service. And through the course of a year, we try to bring them through lots of different experiences from city government to nonprofits to the court system and you name it. And part of their goal is to demonstrate or be able to articulate particular policy positions. And we test out each group throughout the course of the year. And I got to give these guys a lot of credit. This year, obviously, had its challenges, doing most of it virtually. But this group excelled above all the others. And tonight, they had the choice to pick whatever they wanted to talk about and whatever inspired them through the course of their time with the city and share with you some ideas, some thoughts, some challenges that they see. And we also, you guys should know, have Chief Stephen Arusa in the back here, because I know this is fire-related, so he's here to pay a lot of attention to it. No one in the blue uniforms should feel slighted that you picked fire over police, by the way. But with that, I'm going to have our Mayor's Youth Academy introduce themselves, provide you with a short presentation. Feel free to ask some questions if you'd like after the presentation. Go ahead, group.
First of all, we just wanted to thank City Council for hearing our exciting proposal. I'm Arianna Davis. I'm a senior at Fishers High School.
I'm Savannah Jensen, and I'm also a senior at Fishers High School.
I'm Darlene Tanese, and also a senior at Fishers High School.
I'm Noah Spirek, and I'm a junior at Hamilton-Southeastern High School.
And I'm Shelby Sloan, and I'm also a junior at Hamilton-Southeastern High School. Throughout our time at the Mayor's Youth Academy, we visited several departments in our city and learned about what they do and were also proposed policy questions throughout the year regarding those departments. One department that stood out to us specifically was the Fire Department. We learned about all the segments of the Fire Department and what they do, as well as answered John Melling's policy question on the department's reflection on the community and how the department can do more outreach. Today, we will be addressing how the Fire Department can be more connected with the youth of our community. We feel that we did not know as much about the Fire Department as we probably should, and we feel that our peers and other youth should know about the Fire Department and what they do as well.
So as he was explaining us the department divisions, as you can see listed above, the two main ones that we didn't know, that we felt as high schoolers that we didn't know much about and kind of assumed the rest of the community didn't know much about, was the Logistics and Planning Departments. Logistics, a little bit more about the communication and planning, more of the admin and human resources side of it. So for students who also felt like they want to be a part of, to serve the community and be a part of the community, they could also be working more with that admin portion of it, other than just being like a Fire Department that we know.
To begin, we wanted to establish some of what the Fire Department is currently doing well, especially in consideration to young elementary school students. Right now, the Fire Department has a great system for educating the elementary students, as I mentioned, and they need to continue that. And it's really important that they teach these kids at the young age, because when they're younger, kids tend to have a wider imagination and a broader interest level. And I still remember when I went to the Fire Department as a kid and got to be a fireman for a day. So I think, we all think it's very important that they continue to do school visits and create connections at the young age with these elementary school students.
So when we were thinking about the middle school-aged kids, the first thing that came to my mind was the intermediate and the DARE program that they already have at the school. We thought that a way we could incorporate the Fire Department into the DARE program was that when there is the assembly for the DARE program, a part of the Fire Department could come in and kind of explain their role and just introduce themselves to the intermediate kids and let them know that they are here for those students. We also know that another huge important thing in middle school-aged kids is mental health and that that is an age when bullying is very prevalent and students start to experience anxiety and high stress. And so we thought that maybe the Fire Department could come in and give an assembly about mental health and kind of just help the students with some coping mechanisms and ways that they can deal with their mental health. We also know that the middle school level, they're always doing fundraisers, and we thought that maybe there could be a fundraiser where some of the proceeds could go to the Fire Department and a potential prize could be that one student would get to be a firefighter for the day. When we were thinking about the high school level, we were trying to figure out how we could get the high school students involved. Both Fishers and HSC offer internships, and we thought that, you know, right now, there's not an internship available with the Fire Department, and so maybe that could be a new possibility. There's also EMT training classes at both high schools, and we thought maybe we could integrate firefighting as a unit into that class to kind of further explain the Fire Department. And another idea we had was to place a Fire Department booth in the cafeteria for lunches at both high schools, similar to what the ROTC program currently does, where they allow students to come up to the booth and get more information about that program so they could potentially have it as a career in the future.
Another thing that we thought would be to partner with Brain Change to Mind. A little background on what that is. It's an overall, it's a nationwide organization. That's mission is to reduce the stigma surrounding mental health. And luckily, Fishers and HSC have that club within both high schools. So there's three types of meetings. There's a DO, which is serving within the community, distress, which is just ways to distress when you're very anxious. And then there is an educational portion. So we were thinking of having, one of the days, a Fire Department comes in, shares a little about what they do with that mental health outreach that we learned about this year. And then for that DO portion that Brain Change to Mind does, is we partner with the City of Fishers and Parks and Rec with creating a citywide event called Hope for Happiness, which is actually coming up, and be a good idea to also bring firefighters into that event just so people of City of Fishers are also well aware of those resources that they have that the Fire Department provides.
We also wanted to provide a way to fundraise for the Fire Department and just show our community support, because we so much support what the Fire Department does for us on a daily basis. So we had the idea to create a Fishers Fire Festival Day, which would involve parents and kids. The goal would mostly to involve kids eighteen and under, because we know that mental health issues mainly form before then. So we want to just give them a chance to be recognized and see the Fishers Fire Department and see that they're there to support them. So we could put the money towards something specific to support the Fire Department, such as to continue mental health response training that the Fire Department already is doing. So we would use the amphitheater lawn on Municipal Drive and open up that brand-new firehouse to tours and games for kids, to do fire truck tours. I know as a kid, it would be so cool to like get in a fire truck and see what it looks like on the inside. But then also, we would have festival, games, and craft tables. Everyone loves a kid-run lemonade stand, and this would just be a great way to reach out to the community, to kids, and also to potential recruits that could be interested in joining the Fire Department when they're older.
Another great way for the Fire Department to reach out to our community is through social media. So we noticed that currently, the Fire Department has a Facebook page as well as a Twitter page. These social media platforms are great, however, we feel that they only reach a certain age demographic that discloses our age specifically. One way to combat this would be to create an Instagram page. This would help reach the younger demographic of Fishers citizens, as well as help with community outreach as a whole. Another great option is a pretty new app called TikTok. It's a really popular app across our age group right now. These contain fifteen- to sixty-second clips and could really give the community an inside look at what the Fire Department does, as well as really establish the community connection that we've been talking about throughout our presentation. So attached, I have an example of possible content. This was posted by another city's Fire Department, and it is their morning routine.
So we just wanted to thank not only City Council for hearing our ideas and proposals today, but also to the Mayor and everyone associated with Mayor's Youth Academy. We have just enjoyed this experience so much. We're so grateful for the opportunity to make our voices heard and learn more about city government. So in closing, we just wanted to express our gratitude. Thank you.
Does the Council have any questions for the Youth Academy?
Real quick, great job, and I'm really looking forward to John mailing TikTok videos. He's looking up right now what it is, but anyway. Real quick, I just wondered, when you guys were talking about your overall idea of you're less aware of all the different aspects of the Fire Service does. Obviously, you have a school officer on the Police Service. Is that maybe something through interaction on the Police side, maybe you know a little bit about? And maybe there's not. I'm just curious if, how much interaction there is on the Police side. Maybe you know a little bit more about that, unless the Fire Service?
Yeah, that would be a great idea. Specifically, we were very interested in the different jobs that firefighters have. Like Darlene was saying, that people can go to serve their community through the Fire Department, but not just become a firefighter, that if that's not their strength, then they can do admin, they can work in logistics and oversight, that there are so many different things. Mental health response training also is something that we focused on. There are just so many different teams that they could join in the Fire Department, and we wanted to highlight that as something that the youth could be educated on to join.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think you guys just did some terrific ideas. You know, I noted a couple. I thought they were absolutely fantastic. So certainly appreciate you guys participating in this. I know the Mayor does, I know the staff does. I, as David said, want to go ahead and make sure we get John mailing a TikTok right away. And I think we immediately need to get Ed and his command staff tomorrow morning. I'd like to see a TikTok video. First thing, I look at it, because that's the first thing I do when I wake up in the morning, is check my TikTok feed. So again, thank you guys all so much. You guys did fantastic.
Thank you, guys, and we're going to, Chief Arusa and I are going to adjourn with the team out in the hallway here for a minute. But appreciated, and for all of you older folks, you just realized Facebook is no longer cool. Adjust accordingly. So guys, follow me, will you? Thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, we are moving on to the Finance Committee report. I'll now turn it over to Councilor Weindart for your Finance Committee report.
Thank you, President Stoller. Last Wednesday, April the fourteenth, the Budget Finance Committee met, and we came forward tonight to recommend for approval, I have three items on the agenda. One on the Consent Agenda, item seven B, Resolution of the Common Council to Transfer Certain Funds. On the Reg Agenda, item eight, the request to establish a local grant fund. And item nine, request to approve additional appropriations to City of Fishers Criminal Investigations and Forfeiture Fund. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now turn it over to Monica Hiltz for a Health Department update.
Hello, everyone. For the record, my name is Monica Hiltz, and I'm the Director of the Fishers Health Department. Thanks for having me. I'm excited to talk about some stuff. I think we have a lot to be proud of, and I hope that I go through that in a way that makes us all feel really good about what we've done as far as the Fishers Health Department. First, an update on COVID rates and our vaccination status for our community. We do have a slight increase in our cases right now. That's true in Fishers, Hamilton County, Indiana, and the U.S. as a whole. Right now, our case rates are at twelve point eight percent positivity with a twenty point four-three case incidence rate. Really, next week, this week into next week, will be really telling to see what the fallout is from spring break and if we see any further increases in cases as a result of any kind of travel activity that people engaged in. We're not expecting to reach our, like, red risk rating level. For our community risk rating, we do continue in our orange level. The state metrics have the county in their yellow metric currently. Theirs is a little bit more lenient, just as a reminder on their metric scale. Our projections do indicate that we should be seeing a period of decline through May. Hopefully, that will be true. Public health orders, as a reminder, were removed on April sixth, along with the Governor's mandate, since all of our orders were in conjunction with those. As far as our vaccination status, forty-two point six-eight percent of our total population of Fishers has received at least one vaccine. Of the eligible population that we have, of those over sixteen years old, that's fifty-five point three-eight percent, which is really high, well above most of the rates across the state. The only county that I could find that had a higher rate was Ohio County, and they have a population of four thousand people. So, let's see, twenty-seven point one-six percent of our residents have been fully vaccinated, and that, again, is thirty-five percent of our eligible population. So the state's dashboard presents on eligible population. If the pace of the vaccination continues, we could have eighty-five percent of our eligible residents vaccinated by July seventeenth, which would be amazing. However, signs are indicating that the rate of vaccinations may be slowing. We do have some open appointments. As soon as Wednesday this week, we're adding more appointments. But vaccination centers across the state are finding that they're having more and more open appointments. So we'll start looking at other strategies as that continues. Vaccination rates in Fishers continue to outpace those in the state, in every single age group, some as much as seventeen percent higher vaccination rates. The Johnson-Johnson vaccine pause that happened recently, the Committee on Immunization Practices is due to meet again on Friday, and hopefully, we'll make a determination at that point, but that really is hindering the rollout. A lot of people really want that one-dose shot. And then it's also instilled a sense of a lack of confidence in the vaccine that could really hamper our efforts to get everybody vaccinated at the rate that we really need for herd immunity to happen. So those are things on our radar that we're looking at. As far as sheer numbers of stuff that we've been doing, as far as the COVID-related services, we have conducted forty-five thousand four hundred and thirty-two tests through the site over there that we initially set up, with an additional eighteen thousand six hundred and forty-nine swabs done through our state-funded testing, also happening over there. Additionally, another eight hundred and fifty-five rapid tests have been done since we started doing those a couple months ago. So we have conducted really over sixty-five thousand tests so far in Fishers, which is amazing. I think we're almost, what's today, the nineteenth? It's almost a year, just under a week. Our hotline has filled it over twelve thousand five hundred calls, which is just incredible. Contact tracing, we still have a hundred percent of our contacts being traced within twenty-four hours of notification that they're positive. We've done eleven, or we've done eleven public health orders throughout this pandemic. Right now, we don't have any in place. We filled it over three hundred and sixty-five COVID-related violation complaints. Nearly a hundred events have been reviewed, some of which have been approved. We've had over a hundred and seventy-seven thousand views to our COVID landing page on our website. We've had over thirty-three thousand views to our risk rating scale. We've had over forty-four thousand total views of our videos. By tomorrow, we will have administered over twenty-seven thousand vaccines. I think these numbers are mind-boggling. Other services that we continue to perform, we are a full-service health department. We are still following up on reportable conditions for communicable disease, animal bites, lead, TB, everything. We've had over thirty different conditions reported to us that we continue to do follow-up for. We are continuing to do inspections of restaurants, pools. We're testing our open water. We're generating birth and death certificates, handling general environmental complaints, vector control. All of these things are available in our annual report, which has been released today. So I'd invite you to take a look at that. I'm not going to go through all the distinct numbers. We have also taken over our mental health initiative, our program for the city, and are looking to increase the preventative reach of that program. This past year, we rolled out the Community Well-being Survey, which has informed some of the activities of the Council going forward, I think, with the creation of a possible community center or the exploration of that as an idea. Just to recap what's really unique about this Health Department, I want to highlight the integration of services that we employ that have led to a lot of the things that we've been able to do. So first of all, just creating a Health Department in a pandemic is unique. So thank you, City Council. That by itself is a really bold move and one that I've never heard of anywhere else. We continue to do more with less. Our tax rates are lower by comparison than almost the rest of those in the state. We have included those tax rates in our annual report in the appendix, if you want to look at that. We continue to take an educational and partnership-based approach with our local businesses for inspections. We're offering free Serve Safe classes. Those will be rolling out before long. We have numerous health education offerings. We have combined, so our health education program and our permitting and inspection programs are working together on those activities. We cross-utilize staff in a variety of ways in order to allow for greater efficiency, as well as really a greater knowledge based on how to handle different scenarios. For example, our fire inspectors and our permitting and inspection staff have a lot of overlap, and so sometimes they're able to do those inspections concurrently or joint, like, in the same visit. So that saves time. Our emergency management process with Fire and the Health Department, we all combined in order to write our emergency proposals for our mass vaccination site. We have our housing services, so when health departments get housing complaints, our building commissioner is the one that those go to. So we have a built-in knowledge base there as part of the Health Department. We have some of our Health Department inspections, open water sampling, and even vector control. We partner with Public Works to perform those services. Case management and home visiting services, we do some unique things there. We do some video-based, directly observed therapy for some of our TB patients, and we'll be expanding those kind of unique opportunities. Thankfully, we don't have a ton of other communicable diseases. And then just going through the COVID things, the fact that we were able to provide free and easy testing when it wasn't available anywhere else through the creation of the Health Department, we couldn't have done that without the funds appropriated by you, City Council, without having Dr. Lane as a health officer, without our Fire and EMS services, without our IT department, without our Business Services Group, and without one of our Fishers residents, Ari Rahimzada, who made our app that allows us to get so many people through our testing site so quickly. Again, I want to just call out our hotline, twelve thousand five hundred calls, and that's from our customer experience team. Business community updates with economic development, we've been doing those every month. We've also provided testing and daily symptom assessments to our businesses. We could not have done that without our Business Services Group, our Economic Development Team, and partnerships with our local businesses. Community data, testing, a case and vaccination dashboard. So we have unique local data available to our community members, freely available on our website. Anybody can see whenever they want. That is very unique in the state. There are very few health departments that produce any level of local data. We couldn't have done that without our Business Services Group. Contact tracing, many other agencies either paused, never traced, or stopped tracing, including the State Department of Health. Or they were hindered by delayed reporting. So we know that a delay in contact tracing seriously delays the ability to notify individuals that they are a contact and then produces a lot of problems down the road. Since we had our own testing site, we were able to get people notified much more quickly than having to go through the state system and wait for them to report it back to us. We couldn't have done that without our independent contact tracers, our Fire Department, and our Police Department, who came in and helped us contact trace. Our contact tracing team also assists the hotline. They assist with homebound scheduling. They assist with many other tasks. We also were able to GIS map our cases for COVID. We couldn't have done that without Business Services Group, so that we can see where the cases are congregating and target our outreach efforts and messaging to the specific neighborhoods where we're having higher rates of COVID. We were able to make our school-based testing a priority with having that designated portal and location for school-based testing. We couldn't have done that without our partnership with HSC, as well as our Business Services Group. We had a video on how to get kids tested for COVID that saw over eighty-one thousand views, according to YouTube. That by itself is pretty cool, that that many people have watched and had their kids watch to feel comfortable with the testing. And many of the people coming through our testing sites said that was critical. We couldn't have done that without Public Relations. We developed metrics and community recommendations with the input of all of our city leadership team, but especially with our epidemiology and public health teammates that were very unique to the state and one of the first in the state to be anywhere. And the State Department of Health, very quickly, if you recall, had their own metrics that came up shortly after. We've been doing daily to weekly video updates from our leadership, from myself, from Dr. Lane. Lane, from our epidemiologist. With our metric review, we couldn't have done that without help from our health educator, from our epidemiology, and from especially our public relations department. Our Every Action Count, Every Action Counts media campaign and direct mailers and notifications in multiple formats, we couldn't have done that without our community engagement team and our public relations team. Our vaccine interest survey for notifications of vaccine next steps and rollout, and standby list, and registering to be on our homebound list. We had over forty-one thousand people register on that vaccine interest survey, which just still blows my mind. There's still people registering on that. We couldn't have done that without the support of our public relations team, our business services group. Our independent living facilities that were taking a little bit longer to get vaccinated through the federal partnerships, and our homebound vaccinations were completed before the homebound Hoosiers portal was rolled out by the state. We were done, at least with the ones that we knew about at that time. Couldn't do that without our fire and EMS services, who have been making those visits, as well as by our business services group, who helped us organize all of that, and our contact tracers, who made all those phone calls. Our mass vaccination site, many of you have been there. I hope you're as proud of it as I am. It is a, you know, the first mass vaccination site in the state. We can accommodate up to ten thousand people a week. We could absolutely not have done that without our public works department, our IT department, our business services group, fire and emergency services, and many, many, many others. So, we do have some outreach planned as we get into needing to vaccinate more people. We have also rolled out a form for a community group and business vaccination interest, so that we can bring the clinic to them, basically, if they're interested in that. We're looking at outreach to our vulnerable populations, going out to the farmer's market, all of those different things that are a little more standard for health departments. As far as outcomes, like why are we better than we were a year ago, and what have, what have we gained by this? I think it's still too early to tell. I think I've spoken about this about maybe the last time I was here, that, that the true outcomes of all of the work that we've done are going to be a little bit difficult to truly get at, but I do think it's worth recognizing that we are one of the most densely populated areas in the state, if you can believe that. This was a little bit of news to me. We're thirty-seven percent more dense than Carmel, which I would have thought we would be similar to, and we're even more dense. We have a higher population density than Indianapolis by sixteen people per square mile. We are also an area with very high mobility, so this, all of these factors suggest that our rates should have been or could have been much higher had we not taken all of those additional steps that we did over the last year. Our goals for twenty-one, twenty-one are to get rid of COVID, so please get vaccinated. I'm tired of it. We also would like to finish our community health assessment. That will take some time, and then that will lead next year into a community health improvement plan. We're also, you know, hoping to build on our, our mental health initiative into a comprehensive mental health program, and then start our public health clinic, our vector control program, and work on integrating emergency response activities into the rest of the city. So, all that to say, I highlighted all those other departments that we've worked with. I just want you guys to know how proud I am to be in a community where these things are possible. We've all come together to show what we can do, and there's full support for it to be done. I know I and the rest of the team at Fishers Health Department fully recognize that we couldn't have done any of this without your support as a city council, without the mayor's support, without the rest of the city departments, and without our citizens and our businesses and, and every resident, so I want to thank you for that. Thank you for your support. I think we should all be really, really proud of how far we've come, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Monica, is there any problem in the storage of the J&amp;J until it's resolved?
There's no problem yet for storage, and again, we're hoping to have a vote on Friday.
Oh, okay. The other thing, I would like to thank you and your team for a fantastic job. As an ex-mayor in another county that dealt with health departments, you guys are doing fantastic. And a special, special thank you from Britton Falls, the Dell Webb that I live in, the older generation. You guys have been over backwards to help us out, help the people that can't get on a computer and even figure out how to make an appointment. You guys have just done, and, and I think it's been shown, and I'm very proud of my community, and I'm not exaggerating, there has been hundreds, not tens or twenties, hundreds of thank yous to the health department, to Monica, from my subdivision, so thank you very much, Monica.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Monica.
I have a question, if you please.
Yeah.
Monica, I just have a couple of questions, but first of all, I really, my questions always stem from like, how is our Fishers community specifically benefiting from the health department? And when I ask those questions, I very much celebrate and I'm grateful for the work of you and your team. I'm sure it's endless, so thank you very much. My questions are, you and Mayor Fannas set a goal of eighty-five percent vaccination rate for our community, and so I've been trying to pay attention to our vaccination rate, and knowing like that gap is the effort that we have to put forth to communicate and to encourage our residents to get vaccinated. So, right now, I think fully vaccinated rate in our community is like twenty-seven percent, and, and I thought I saw that Hamilton County's vaccination rate was a little higher than that, just our county. So, I mean, not that it's a competition, but that is something that I'm, I'm taking a look at.
So, just, just to speak on that, if you're looking at the state metrics, I believe they're, they are calculating based on the eligible population, and our, and our dashboard does not calculate based on eligible population currently, it's based on total population currently. So, I gave you both statistics when I read through there.
Oh, can you say that again?
Yeah, yeah, but as of the eligible population, we're at thirty-five percent.
Got it. Okay, thank you, that's really helpful. And right now, I appreciate the health department. Our health department is part of the overall statewide network, right? So, we have over half of our vaccinations being produced for non-Fishers residents. I don't think that's a problem, per se, because you're over the whole statewide network, but I just want to point that out, because those are some of my questions about, hey, my job is, what is Fishers residents' benefit for the health department? So, and then lastly, you said the annual report has been released, so I look forward to receiving that. I did.
I think it's in your email.
Okay, oh, very good, very good. Okay, all right, thank you very much.
One, one point of clarification, because I get this from residents from time to time, stating, well, why should I be paying for someone that doesn't live in Fishers to get a test here? Maybe, Monica, you could talk about the reimbursement and how this works from a state perspective and why it's, from our, from our perspective, it's not a financial detriment for us to offer those shots to people who don't live in Fishers. You want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, just first and foremost, we're required to, to offer vaccine to everyone, and really, truly, it benefits all of us to be able to offer vaccine to as many people as possible, and that was one of the reasons for standing up a mass vaccination site, so that we would have as many vaccines as possible to offer people, because one of the major constraints, especially from some of the smaller pharmacies and health departments, is being able to, to process the number of people that we really need to be able to do in order to get to the, to the herd immunity status is going to take forever if we don't all think a little more creatively and do more. From a reimbursement standpoint, all of the health departments receive funding from the state for vaccinations. We're expecting to receive more. We haven't, I don't know that we've received enough to cover everything quite yet, but we fully expect to have all of the costs reimbursed. We also will, are expecting, again, not received yet, but are expecting to receive the rate for the vaccine administration, so the more vaccines we do, the more of that we will get back, actually. So, it benefits us in that way as well.
Thank you so much.
If I could add a little bit, Monica, I want to say thank you as, as not only a citizen here in Fishers, but a business owner here in Fishers. Your economic development team came into my firm and kind of went through some protocols, and we follow them very well. We all got tested before we all came back to work, and kind of reporting back, as you may, I'm a CPA, so we're, we're putting a lot of hours this time of year, unfortunately, just because of what we do. We've only had really one instance where we had an issue with our team, and that was they were out on an audit, observing an inventory, and went into the CFO's office, and the CFO, for whatever reason, thought this was all just a big hoax and was not wearing a mask, while my team was. That Friday, that particular CFO came down with COVID-19, which required two of my team members, one being my son, to quarantine for two weeks, but just want to say thank you for everything you're doing for this community. I think the health departments proved it's, it's well worth the investment, and we're doing some great things, want to continue that, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks to all of you.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, there are two items on the consent agenda, request to approve previous meeting's minutes from the council's March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, regular meeting and executive session, and item B, a resolution authorizing the city controller to transfer funds. Do I have a motion to?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to budget and financial, zero-four-one-nine-two-one, a request to establish a local grant fund, the ARP coronavirus, local fiscal refund, recovery fund, first, second, and third reading.
Thank you. For the record, Lisa Bradford, city controller. As you guys are all probably aware, on March eleventh, twenty-twenty-one, President Biden signed the one-point-nine-trillion American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one, and in the ARP, there is a hundred and thirty-point-two billion that is allocated to local governments, of the amount to local governments. Sixty-five billion of that is allocated to cities through a modified formula, so for non-entitlement communities, it's about nineteen-point-five billion. So, non-entitlement communities will receive their funds from the state of Indiana, no later than thirty days from the state's receipt of funds from the Treasury. So, the first tranche, so basically the first installment of the American Rescue Plan funds are due within sixty days of the ARP enactment. So, with all of that, the city of Fishers is entitled to receive funds. The Indiana State Board of Accounts issued a directive that we need to establish a local fund to account for the funds received through the American Rescue Plan, and in addition to the establishment of the funds, there will be requirements for any entity receiving funds to submit periodic reports with a detailed accounting of the use of funds to the government related to that. And so, you guys are probably aware what the funds may be used for. I won't go into detail of them, but it essentially is to respond to the public health emergency and to recover revenue losses. And then you have until December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, to spend the funds you're allocated. And due to the timing, we're asking the council to suspend the rules and have for second and third reading.
Do I have a motion to suspend the rules and approve?
So moved.
Motion by Pete. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John. This is open for discussion. Does any council member have any comments regarding the suspension of the rules? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of suspending the rules for ordinance zero-four-one-nine-two-one, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve ordinance zero-four-one-nine-two-one?
So moved.
Motion by Pete. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David. Open for discussion. Does any council member have any comments regarding this item?
Well, sir, I'll just comment, just as chair of the Budget Finance Committee, we're setting this up because we're, we need to get this in place now to receive these funds. And there's going to be a process we have to go through to get reimbursement, use these funds, and, and accounting back to the federal government. So, this is going to be a, the beginning of a, a place to park this money, but there's going to be a whole process we're going to go through to account for it.
Right.
And keep it separate.
Excuse me?
And keep it separate.
Oh, absolutely, has to be kept separate.
Right, like that's the point.
Totally separate, and that's the whole reason for this fund being set up. Just the reason why we've got to move quickly on this, because we need to have it set up.
Set up, yeah, to receive the funds.
Any other comments? I'll close this, close the discussion and call for a vote to approve ordinance zero-four-one-nine-two-one. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to number nine, R-zero-four-one-nine-two-one-A, a request to approve an additional appropriation to the city of Fishers Criminal Investigations Forfeiture Fund. Here to discuss this is Lisa Bradford.
Thank you. For the record, Lisa Bradford, city controller. The item before you is a request to approve an additional appropriation for the forfeiture fund. So, during the early months of twenty-twenty-one, we realized a need in the police department to replace some equipment, and this is a legal use of funds in the forfeiture fund, so the total cost is closer to fifty thousand. The police department has found twenty-five thousand in their operating budget and identified the additional funding of twenty-five thousand from the forfeiture fund, and so this has been publicly advertised in both the current Fishers and Current and Geist for the public hearing, and is within the lawful use of the fund, and I'll turn it over to the chief to talk a little bit more about the fund in general.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you, council, for the time to speak on this, this movement of money from the forfeiture fund. Just a few facts to back up the reason why we're doing this within the police department in this fashion, because it's, it's not something we have historically done, but before I get into a few details, I wanted to outline something that I think is going to be important for y'all to remember as we move down the line. One is, I wanted the council to know that last year in twenty-twenty, our officers responded to just shy of fifty thousand calls for service to our community. Of those calls for service within our community, only thirty-five of them resulted in any kind of use of force or weapons needed to bring them under control. That's less than one percent. The reason that I'm bringing this up is we're about to probably talk about guns and gun racks, and I wanted you to know that the members of the agency, the police officers themselves, are, are very professional in their verbal de-escalation, their verbal tactics, and their crisis intervention techniques to de-escalate situations that have risen out of control. And some of those I wanted to note here today, because I think it's important as we talk about the equipment needed to police the streets of Fishers. So, the why, why this and why gun racks for this specific money, because that's what it will be used for. The guns that go into the racks are important to the officers that possess them and train with them. In Fishers, not, some far-off agency, not on the coast, in Fishers, last year, our officers, your officers responded to two murder suicides. One of those murder suicides, seven of my officers were pinned down in gunfire. Also, last year, they responded to a homicide. That particular homicide resulted in three or four homicides in addition to it that crept down south into Indianapolis. The reason why I bring that up is because we often tell ourselves that the violence of Indianapolis is not in Fishers, but it is, and we're out there patrolling it and policing it. Also, this year alone, we've already responded to two shots fired, two separate occasions, two separate shooters with two separate victims. We are responding to gunfire, and the equipment that we're allocating, our officers, that you allocate, are needed. Now, some of this violence can be troubling to the community at large, so initiatives have been taken by the police department. I want to speak to those very briefly. We began an initiative in twenty-nineteen in the police department, along in unison with the mayor, to join with our fellow communities throughout Indianapolis to control the illegal crime guns that are hitting the streets of Fishers. In March of twenty-nineteen, we began this endeavor, and we've taken two hundred crime guns off the street in the city of Fishers. A hundred and twelve hits are indicators to violent crime to the city of Indianapolis has come from those weapons that we retrieved from the streets. Three of those homicides, and none of those persons have been shot. So, we are patrolling with everything that we can, with the utmost professionalism, with the equipment needed to do it. So, let's talk about the gun racks, because that's important. The gun racks themselves are flawed. We didn't know this last year in the budget process. We weren't having this issue. This January, one of our rifles was stolen from one of our patrol vehicles. Our Criminal Investigations Division retrieved it very quickly and returned it. It was then that intel led us to know that other agencies, such as Indianapolis State Police, FBI, and Lawrence Police Departments, all suffered similar thefts from their vehicles of these weapons that are contained in gun racks similar to ours. This is not a surprise to us. We often have to engage and take one step forward from the criminals that are out to do us harm, and sometimes they take a step forward. In this case, they figured out how to manipulate the weapon system or racks that we had in our cars. It is a very, it is a very cold night at two AM when I got to wake up the mayor to tell him one of our rifles is on the street, that one of the very weapons that we issue our officers could come back to harm the very community it's been set to protect. So, we immediately, we needed to do something within the agency. Also, why this was happening, this criminal element that is pursuing weapons of police officers was surveilling one of my officers when he went home to one of his residences and was going to attack his vehicle and take his guns, and they were contacted, and that, that plot was thwarted. The reason I tell you this is because unbeknownst to us, my command staff, we don't make decisions in a vacuum. We get everybody together, try to figure out what is the best resources and the best way to serve and protect the city of Fishers, and so we believe that the immediate step forward of these gun racks and changing them out was the best route. out was the best route forward. Now, internally, we found twenty-five thousand that we immediately moved to this problem. And then, the asset forfeiture is a fund that is statutorily set for us to use in situations such as this. Typically, as a command staff, we like to use it for stuff like trauma bags. In the past, we've used it for our drone program, or we used it for equipment in our evidence unit. We try to do something that affects the entire police department, so the officers know where that money goes, because we believe in transparent leadership. We met with the comptroller. We made sure it was within the rules of the statutes of the law. We met with our city attorney and did our homework to make sure we weren't making a wrong move, because we knew that maybe the day would come where we have to publicly ask for something like this. My knowledge of state and federal seizures are such, we, the police department, do not set the amounts that we seize. It's not up to us. Prosecutor Lee Buckingham sets that tone. He decides the amounts that go to us, that go to him, and then go to the school system. I do know from checking today that we have, some of our assets that we have seized have gone to our school system. And also, likewise, on the federal side, federal prosecutors set the tone for the money and the assets that are seized and how they're used at a local level, such as the Fishers Police Department. I believe that we are well, being transparent, well within our right, and the Department of Justice makes sure that we are. I'll close with this before we decide if we can use this, these funds for this or not. But the national narrative is dangerous right now. I've promised my officers the proper equipment and weapons to maintain safety in our community. In five weeks, there have been eight mass shootings, and one of them here in our own community in Indianapolis. So I'm asking you tonight to help allocate this money towards, so we can fix these gun racks, so your officers can continue to patrol and keep the streets safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Gephardt, for your explanation and sharing your information with us. I will now open this up for a public hearing. I'm now going to open it up for a public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to speak may come forward. Please state your name, address, and you will be given three minutes to speak. Do we have anyone?
Yeah, thank you, council. President Stoller, my name is Lane Skeeter. I'm at one zero four nine five, Aston Drive. First, I want to express a gratitude to our officers for their hard work. I'll call out Officer Weaver specifically. I recently dealt with him. He helped with an issue in our neighborhood, resolving damage to our property from a gunshot. So I recognize, you know, the issue is very, very important. You know, they keep our community safe. They deserve all the resources they need to fulfill their duties. I, I believe those resources should be paid for happily by our residents who believe, or who I believe would have no issue if the issue was brought before them. What I'd like to focus on is one of misaligned incentives. I do not think that the police department should be funded in any part by proceeds from the act of enforcing our laws. Civil forfeiture is a most egregious example of this. When we open that door, we open our officers and the whole department up to accusations of corruption. The fact, this fact, and the understanding that minorities are disproportionately the target of civil forfeiture, should give members of the council pause in allowing this transfer. It is also important to remember that the law does not guarantee the return of property even after a not guilty verdict has been returned. It is, this, or this property could very well be, or have been obtained in completely legal ways. Any property seized during the course of enforcement should be returned to the owner only, or after, sorry, and only after all attempts have been made to do so, should that value of the property be diverted to another state department that has, has not been involved with this collection. And I thank you, the council, thank you, the council, for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to approve resolution R zero four one nine two one A?
So moved.
Motion by John, second by Pete. Open for discussion. Does any council member have any comments regarding this item?
I do. Comment and a couple of questions, if you please. I do have concerns about the agency who seizes assets from citizens benefiting directly from the assets that seized. I know that this is lawful, and I know that there is a need that these funds are being recommended to be directed to. However, I, I feel that it is not in best practice. And I have a couple of questions. One is, may I ask a question of how much is in the forfeiture fund currently? So, the request is twenty-five thousand dollars to be taken from that fund, so I was curious about how much is in that fund currently? And secondly, if those funds were unavailable, how, what are the alternatives for the gun racks to be funded?
Lisa keeps the money.
Yes, she does.
So, currently, there is about sixty-five thousand in the forfeiture fund. So, it was, if we didn't have it, like I said, the police department had identified twenty-five thousand in their operating. The other, if there is not, and we felt as a city that it was the need that we need to pay for them, it would essentially hit the cash reserve balance because that, and so it would hit the general fund.
So that is indeed a possibility to take the funds from the cash reserve, right?
It is. However, we have the, like I said, we have a pretty, we have a decent cash balance in the forfeiture fund, and it's a legal use. So that is one of the reasons why we went towards that direction.
I understand. And I think we're all agreed, the legality of it is not in question here at all. It's just the practice. And my last question is, is there a policy currently in place to request and access these funds?
Yeah, anytime that these funds are used, it is the same system now. So my first act would be to alert the comptroller. I would tell her that I needed to move a certain amount out of that, of the forfeiture fund. My next visit would be to back up. First visit to the mayor, then to Lisa, then it would be to Chris, the city attorney, to make sure that we were relevant in our rights and all the statutes are being followed. These aren't funds. And then, here is the ultimate deciding factor.
And, Chief, I, I know the procedure. I was curious about the policy, because as a resident spoke, like, there is some, we, we have to acknowledge some sensitivity here.
Sure.
So I was curious about the policy, if there is one.
Well, point of clarification. So when, when we approve the budget every year, and you guys approve the appropriations of these funds, are you asking what policy lens you view that through when you approve the budget?
No, I just meant, like, policy in terms of, like, this would be inappropriate use, this would, I mean, just, we all know it's legal, so I'm, I'm just wondering where the standards are.
Yeah. So typically, like, any of the things that we bring before you guys during the budget process, you would have the opportunity to ask those questions and view that from a prioritization. So, what is your policy? What is your thoughts as a council as you appropriate those funds? So, for instance, this fund, there would have been appropriations every year when we, when we approved the budget, and you guys would have asked questions or could have asked questions as to what you would want to see those funds used for. And if that's a broader conversation that the council would like to have during the next budget process, certainly able to do that. I think one of the things that, I think we all need to be cognizant of, the fact that this is a state law. So these funds are being deposited into a local fund because of, frankly, the hard work and, and difficult and dangerous work that a lot of these law enforcement folks are doing. And Chief Gephardt mentioned earlier, he has no control over the percentage of funds that come his way versus goes to the school. So, I do think if there's a community desire to see this change, it's probably a state legislature conversation to have about changing how this all works going forward. But from a policy perspective, it would be the same question you could ask someone about which roads do we decide to pave and not pave.
Right.
That's a germane conversation during the budget process. And if this is something important to everyone, we can definitely continue to have those discussions moving forward at the budget process, because we're going to be having this discussion again summertime as we talk about the two thousand and twenty-two budget.
Thank you.
I, I think, I think it's really important that we be careful with words here, because I heard a couple of times in this, they're benefiting, like, that, that's like, there's some, and I, I know I heard that at least twice in this dialogue, that they're, they're not out there benefiting from some money or whatever, whatever, some movie or some fantasy that's out there about police and taking things from people. I mean, this is something that helps supplement, and by state law, helps supplement law enforcement efforts to continue. Unfortunately, we have to, we can't pay enough police officers to, to protect us. And, you know, I have a kid that was up at a, at a, at a, at a basketball tournament, and his coach was shot by, by a parent that didn't, thought they didn't have enough playing time. I mean, you can't, you don't have enough police officers to protect us from some of the madness that goes on in our society. And it's really critical that we watch, the word, words are very important here, and it can set off people. And, and to say, say or even imply that our police department benefits somehow from taking from, from people is, I think, a significant, a significant statement. I, I think, I think that's a significant statement. And I, I just want to make sure that we're focused on, there's an accountability, there's an audit from the state to the local and to the chief. And he's accountable for what the officers do and their budget, and it's submitted, and, and it's audited. And so, I just, I want to be careful with where we're headed with, with somebody.
I appreciate that comment, because I did use the word benefit. And certainly, what probably, I, I understand your point, is more appropriate. It's a supplement to the budget. And that's accurate.
I, I, I get that. I just, it's, it's, we're already on a tedious, tedious point in our society right now, that, that those things can set people off. You know what I'm saying?
Okay, council, a wine guard would like to make some.
And we don't, we don't need any more setting people off. We need to bring people together.
So, I, I think, I think Scott framed it incredibly well. You know, if I recall, every single year, we get sworn into office, I, I swear an oath to uphold the laws of the United States of America, the state of Indiana, and the ordinances of the city of Fishers. This argument, which we're having right, has no bearing whatsoever on what we're talking about. If you folks have issues with what's going on in terms of the way the money can be used, you need to go argue that with the state. So we need to put this to bed pretty quickly. Ed, you and your officers have always done a fantastic job. And I don't think anybody's arguing that point. I'm not suggesting anybody's arguing that point. But this seems to be, to be just a very statutory thing that you have to go through, almost like every other appropriation that we do here. So let's not make any more out of it than what it is. Let's just get this thing done, and let's get it over. That's all I got.
Well, I make, if, if, I guess a question I have for you, Chris, is if, if we let this twenty-five thousand dollars just go off on its own, where does it go? It stays in the fund, or does it get passed on to the state?
The forfeiture fund remains, and the funds in the forfeiture fund remain in the forfeiture fund.
So, the reality of it is, I mean, again, I think Pete makes a good point. We've all made some good points. I got to look at this from a taxpayer's perspective, okay? I was hired to do a job. I was hired to, in public safety, was one of the biggest reasons that my citizens look at me, at least in my district. Also, my taxpayers want me to be responsible from a dollar perspective on how we spend our money. So if I have the ability to, to fund this, these gun racks, and I'm paying, in essence, fifty cents on the dollar, that's a good deal for my taxpayers, in my opinion. And I'm supporting it, and I'm, I think, that's just where I'm at with it. You know, you gentlemen and ladies do an outstanding job. I'm one of the privileged council members, get to serve on the police foundation and have the privilege of getting to know you folks and a great job that you do. And I think for the, for the risks that you take, it's incredible what the job that you do and, and how you serve our community, so.
Thank you.
As a follow-up to John and the taxpayers, Greenfield and, and, Chief, you might remember, back about ten years ago, Greenfield on I-70 got one of the biggest halls in the state of Indiana for years. And the benefit of that for Greenfield was paid all the cameras. And we couldn't afford to raise the taxes to do the cameras. And the benefit of that hall that we got off I-70 in the drugs paid for cameras in Greenfield. So, it's well worth it.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions as well. Are you replacing them, or are you fixing them?
I got to replace them all.
Okay. And are you able to, like, go back on the company that you got them from originally and get some money back, or anything like that?
They don't want them.
Okay. They won't.
We try.
Refund you or anything?
Look, I'm as fiscal and as frugal and as I'll tell you as I can be. I say, can we get them back? Can we trade them in? This is where we're at. In fact, in, in order to reduce costs, I'm jumping on an order with Indianapolis Metro Police Department at a, at a reduced cost, so I can outfit my cars immediately rather than wait.
And the next question, so, it's for Lisa. So, this fund can also be used for schools, right? Is that?
School, there is a portion of forfeitures that are seized that do go to schools, and that's not part of our fund. So our fund is, you have the money that Fishers is entitled to, and then the schools have a separate fund they control.
So this money would never go to schools whatsoever?
The, the money from these seizures have already been allocated to the schools already by the prosecutor.
That's what I wanted to know.
So this is what we have left?
We get what's left. Yes.
Correct. Okay.
Okay, I'm going to close the discussion and call for a vote to approve resolution R zero four one nine two one A. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, officers.
And President Stoller, if I can make, we're moving into the planning zoning section. Items ten, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, all revolver on a voluntary annexation basis. I don't see the necessity to have a staff report on each one of these. So unless there's any objection from council, I would move to that we just take them up one at a time and vote as we go.
Okay, so we can do items ten and eleven together for the voluntary annexation?
Well, not together. We'll do them individually and vote on them individually. But I don't need, poor Hillary, I don't need Hillary talking to me about a voluntary annexation, which I've heard a number of times.
Okay.
So I'm going to make a motion to approve item ten.
Okay, motion to approve item ten. Motion by Pete. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Todd. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion, any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to approve item eleven.
Second.
Motion by Pete, second by John. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then if we don't mind, if we could jump over twelve and just continue this so we can get it done?
Okay.
Any objections?
No objections.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve item thirteen.
So, motion made by Pete. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Cecilia. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to approve item fourteen.
Motion by Pete, second by?
Second.
Second by David?
Sure.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to approve item fifteen.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Pete, or, second, got them mixed up. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to approve item sixteen.
Motion by Pete, second by?
Second.
By David. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Motion to approve item seventeen.
Motion by Pete, second by, second by Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to approve item seventeen.
Motion to approve item, are we on eighteen?
Eighteen, Pete.
Motion to approve item eighteen.
Sorry, I didn't get my check mark. Sorry.
Okay, motion by Pete, second by?
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Good job, Ross.
Thank you. Okay, we are back to item number twelve. Zero four one nine two one A, request to approve utility easement vacation of the Indianapolis Airport Authority. We have first, second, and third reading. And Ross Hillary is here to present this to us.
Thank you, council. And Pete, you made my job easy tonight. Before you tonight is an ordinance zero four one nine two one A, which is utility easement vacation. Before you tonight, we are asking for first, second, third reading, and public hearing. Again, this is an easement vacation. Frost Brown, Todd, LLC, on behalf of the Indianapolis Airport Authority has requested this consideration of the utility easement. The property is located north of East Ninety-sixth Street between Masters Road and the Nickel Plate Trail right away, specifically on these four parcels that are shown here. This was required to be publicly noticed and was done in the newspaper, as well as provided to the entities that the easement touches, which includes the airport and the Nickel Plate Trail, which is owned jointly by the Hamilton County, the city of Fishers, and the city of Noblesville. Without any further ado, this is the easement vacation before you tonight. And again, as I said, staff recommends suspending the rules post, holding first, second, and third reading, as well as the public hearing. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing now. Do we have anyone wishing to I'm going to open the public hearing now. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on this topic? Okay, hang on just a second. As a reminder, the public hearing is limited to the action before us tonight, which is the proposed vacation of the drainage easements. If the public has general comments regarding prospective development of the airport property, these are best addressed at the end of tonight's meeting during our community comment section. Any member of the public wishing to speak regarding the proposed vacation, not the development, may come forward and speak about the vacating, the drainage easements may come forward. Please state your name, address, and you'll be given three minutes to speak. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Motion by Pete. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Cecilia. This is open for discussion. Does any council member have comments regarding suspension of the rules? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of suspending the rules for ordinance 041921A, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
I'll give the, I'll ask for a motion to give this first re-, ordinance first reading.
First reading.
John, thank you.
Thanks, Ross.
Thank you. Great work on that voluntary annexation, too.
Okay, we are on to item number 19. 021521D, a consi-, consideration of a rezone for ENI-69 overlaying to PUDM for mixed use. I'll turn it over to Tony to explain this to us.
Good evening. The, uh, this is, uh, Turn Bogato Director of Planning and Zoning. The item before you is a rezone from employment node to a PUD mixed use. The property is located just east of USA Parkway, slightly south of IKEA Way and south of the new Fishers District, uh, specifically the hotel, uh, there to the north, as you can see on the site plan. Uh, just to recap a little bit about the zoning of this property. So, when the comp plan was approved in 2016, it talked about creating an employment node district around the interstate to protect the land there for, uh, corporate headquarters or other land uses that we deemed appropriate. At the time of that discussion, this property was actually zoned part of the Exit 5 PUD, which is a 1980 PUD approved by Sunbeam. That PUD had everything from apartment complexes to auto sales, retail, big box, uh, few of, pretty much everything other than distilling of bones. And so, when the city came in, we wanted to rezon this employment node, one for corporate headquarters, but two, to protect it to make sure we have the appropriate land use. So, in the employment node, we did talk about creating the specific PUD to come in when we thought a use was compatible. And this would be the case tonight. It's been before council twice and went to planning commission last week. So, the project is for 250 units. It's a duplex and townhome project, um, being built by Thompson Thrift, the same developer of the Fishers District. They've met with residents for several months now next to this project. Uh, they've provided plenty of, um, buffer yards, in staff's opinion, to pin, uh, to address any of the concerns there on the east side. They're also showing two or three different concepts for a retail center. Um, that's not the main focus of tonight's PUD, but there are several options in there. That'll be a future plan development. Um, here is the architecture that's been, uh, was changed from the very first reading and this has been approved by the PUD committee and the planning commission again reviewed this last week. These are the villas. And then here are the townhomes. And I will note that the townhomes are located more to the north, so right behind the hotel site. So, in line with some of the density, they've put the larger buildings closer to the taller buildings to the north. And here's the clubhouse. The project's gonna include, uh, a lot of amenities for the residents there. And then, uh, there's a trail system as well as pocket parks. And the trail system's gonna be built as a park that's dedicated to the city and staff's available for any questions. Again, planning commission had the public hearing. There was one resident who spoke about the buffer yard, which we addressed. There was a concern about it being less than 30 feet. And in her neighborhood, the buffer yard and the building's gonna be set back 85 and a half feet. So, there was no concern on our part. As well as with, next to the trail, you have a pond on the east side of the development. So, we believe the buffering yard and the use is, um, adequate and beyond what would have been approved under the employment node.
Thank you, Tony. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 021521D?
So moved.
Motion by Pete. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Todd. This is open for discussion. Does any council member have comments regarding this item? Pardon?
Petitioner like to say it?
Oh.
No, the, the public hearing was for the planning commission, not for tonight, the council meeting.
Would the petitioner like to say anything?
Good evening, Madam President. Members of the city council, for the record, my name is Steve Harden and I'm a partner in law from a Fagery Drink. I'm pleased to be representing Thompson Thrift. And with me from Thompson Thrift tonight is Mr. Eric Wojak. Um, just a couple of things, um, at the planning commission meeting, we did, uh, we have had several meetings with neighbors and we'd asked them through a variety of different correspondences and they were communicating through their, uh, leadership to us. And we just said, if anybody has any issues or questions, please let us know in advance of the planning commission. We would try to incorporate that, if we could, into the PUD ordinance. So, we did have one of the neighbors, I believe it was right, either right before or the day of, the planning commission had asked to have their property in the back have be part of a tree preservation area. And so, we verbally said that that would be included at the planning commission. That's what the vote was. So, there hasn't been anything changed beyond that since the planning commission meeting. There was a question, uh, from, um, Councilwoman Kobel, who had asked us about a particular portion of the trail location. And I've got a couple exhibits just to kind of walk you through that. So, this is the concept plan. This is the concept plan that you saw at first reading that had the proposed trail that ran along the retired eastern boundary and then circled along the southern part of the property and then back up through the west side and back to east and then it wrapped and connected back here. Uh, and then in some of our initial meetings with the neighbors at Walnut Hills, they asked if Thompson Thrift could not have the trail run along, uh, the area adjacent to the Walnut Hills neighborhood. And so, Thompson Thrift agreed to do that. If you can see here, there were two ponds, so there's a connection there. Thompson Thrift agreed to relocate the trail. And so, that was done following those meetings. And this was the plan that was then presented at the planning commission showing where the trail doesn't, no longer runs along the boundary next to Walnut Hills. Uh, Councilwoman Kobel had requested that Thompson Thrift reconsider. So, here, here's the, here's the trail today. You can see that when it runs across through here, makes a draw down to the south and then heads back over to the west. Councilwoman Kobel asked if Thompson Thrift would be willing to have this segment moved from here over to this side of the street. Uh, and they agreed to do it. It was not, the exhibit was not prepared in time for the planning commission, but it was prepared, uh, afterwards. And so, uh, if the city council would like to see that segment of the trail relocated across the street, Thompson Thrift is agreeable to do it. We think they could do it just as part of the process. Anyways, we go along forward, but if it's important to the city council and they would like to have that as a condition of approval, Thompson Thrift is agreeable to that as well. Otherwise, we'd be happy to answer any specific questions that you have.
So, Steve, just to make clear, because there's a gentleman in the back room who seems to be a little bit upset. So, I want to make sure, we've made no other changes from the planning commission document other than the one you just referenced. So, I, I'm at planning commission, which we gave an unanimous favorable recommendation of my knowledge, I think. You know, there was no other changes from the presentation which you gave there other than this one movement that was requested by Councilwoman Kobel.
That's correct.
Okay, so, what we're hearing now, they're saying no. But to everything that we did, everything was in, in time, on place, public hearing was held, et cetera, et cetera.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and I appreciate you, uh, showing us the, the, uh, exhibit there. And I, you know, I'm in favor of the project. I had just asked to, to have the, the, uh, park plan changed just to provide more of a public ac-, ask, access because it's going to be, uh, held by the city, owned by the city, using taxpayer money. So, I just thought it made more sense for the connectivity and for better access. So, I appreciate it. So, for me, I, I will, I will be voting in favor of it on condition that, uh, you would, you would change the, the park conceptual plan there.
Thank you.
So, Council President Stoller, I'd take, um, um, Councilmember Kobel's comment as a motion to approve on the condition that that portion of the trail that Steve presented be moved from the location on the exhibit to the west side of the street.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by John. So, this is open for discussion for council members. Do we have any questions or comments regarding this? Seeing none, I'll close the discussion and call for a vote to.
I'm sorry. I, I did. I'm sorry. Um, I'm just looking at the procedures of, um, the city council. It, it is up to your discretion, President Stoller, to allow for additional public comment. And this is the final vote and it does seem like we have public comment, um, that wishes to be expressed. Um, I would just encourage you, um, to allow that.
I'm gonna close the discussion and call for a vote at this point for ordinance 021521D. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We had public comment on this extensively at the.
Just move on, we, to vote, just vote.
So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Two nays and an abstain.
We have an abstention and we have, do you want, do you want to do a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
David George?
Abstain.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John Weingart?
Aye.
Cecilia Kobel?
Aye.
Brad Dramer?
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman?
Aye.
Samantha DeLong?
Nay.
Jocelyn Bear?
Nay.
Yep, um, six yays, one abstain, and two nays.
Moshe Carries?
I would, um, make a comment to the folks in the back of the room. We do have policies and procedures in place for obvious reasons because things can get out of hand at times when we don't follow those. I will urge you to talk to Steve Harden, who represents Thompson Thrift, who has been extremely amiable at getting things accomplished. So, I just want to kind of put that out there for you. I think they've kind of bent over backwards about it and I certainly feel your frustration. But i- it, it creates problems for us downstream when we don't follow the rules on a consistent basis, so. We, we do have a public comment section coming up here very quickly, which you guys are absolutely willing to stay for and make those public comments then. But this item has now been voted on.
Yes, we just have one more item and then we'll be, uh, moving on to the public comment section. So, moving on to item 041921B, consideration of a text amendment to section 3.4.2 of Municipal Airport District to modify the lot area requirement, building setbacks, and impervious surface area. This is a first reading. We have Tony here to introduce this to us.
Yeah, good evening. Once again, Tony Bogato, Director of Planning and Zoning. So, this item is a text amendment to our municipal airco-, airport district. This district was also established in 2016 in response to the comp plan update, which talked about creating some economic, uh, redevelopment around the airport. This part of, this is the only area the city's owned, Municipal Airport, because it's the only airport we have. So, it only applies to this property. Um, now, here we are four years later and we're starting to get some project proposals coming forward. And working with the very first project, we realized there's some issues within the standards that we felt are not compatible with the rest of the city's standards and just the way it reads. So, what we're proposing tonight is a text amendment to clean this up. We have had to have a variance for our first project and more than likely, any development on this proj-, property would require variances because of the way the code's written. So, one example is lot area. Today, it says 150 acres. There's lots on the municipal airport today, even including the runway, that's less than 150 acres. I think the intent of this was to say that the overall lot for this size of zoning should be a minimum of five acres or 150 acres. But we feel that this is just not relevant since it only applies to the airport. And if there's ever a future airport, I guess we'd have to consider that. Um, then the setbacks, again, were much larger than any other district we have. We compare this pretty similar to our flex employment and industrial standards. And those setbacks are less than 100 feet, uh, as well as there's no interior setbacks. So, we're just basically making these all in line with what we feel is compatible with the development of the master plan and the zoning. So, staff's here for any questions. Again, this is for first reading. So, there will be a public hearing in May and then the council will be able to see it again in May.
Okay, this is open for discussion. Does any council member have comments regarding this item? Seeing none, I'll close this, close the discussion. Do I have a motion to, for first reading? Motion by Pete. We are now, we have, uh.
Council President Stoller, real quick, before we get to public comment, I just want to say, as Tony walks off here, uh, this is his last agenda item with the city of Fishers. And, uh, he's done a great job over the last several years, has worked on some major legislation for us. A complete update of our unified development ordinance has really solidified the team at the planning and zoning department and, and worked through the first comp plan and has ushered through lots and lots of different developments and worked with so many different residents in the city of Fishers. And, uh, Tony is departing to the private sector and we wish him really all the best, uh, moving sort, forward. So, Tony, thank you for all your years of service. It's greatly appreciated.
Yeah, and thank you all for your support and efforts. I mean, uh, five years in Fishers feels like 15 years, right? And in the regular government world, from where I came from. So, I've learned a lot. Within five years, we've done a lot. And I think you're in good hands with the team that's, uh, following and I appreciate everyone. And you'll see me around. I'm still living in Fishers and so.
Well, best wishes. You've done a tremendous job. Thanks for all your service.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you, Tony.
And tonight, we can also, in the same breath, introduce our new Director of Planning and Zoning, Megan Shaper, who was our Assistant Director. Uh, she'll be stepping into that role and we're very excited to have her in that job. We know she'll do a fantastic job. Megan, you want to stand up? Just wave so everybody knows who you are. If you don't know her yet, you will. So, um, we're excited to have Megan in the team here as well. Um, but that'll turn back over to you, Council President.
Okay, well, I would like to, uh, say one more thank you, um, before we start the public comment section. And that is to Councilor DeLong, who will be, uh, her, this will be her last council meeting. I want to say thank you for her service to this community. We greatly appreciated it. Thank you. Okay, so now we're into the public comment section. As a reminder to the public, any comments submitted by residents by the designated time period have been received and distributed among the council. Those comments will be placed on the record of this month's meeting as if the members presented those comments during the, uh, community comment section. I'm now going to open the community comment period. Any member of the public wishing to speak may come forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Come on, don't everybody at once. I know there's a bunch of yous. We want to hear what you have to say.
Good evening. Chad Litten, 11-034 Timberview Drive. This is in regard to the Fishers Villas, uh, situation. And, uh, just bringing it up, there has been a change since the planning commission met on this last week and it involves the buffer fence and the location of the buffer fence. Uh, it is not where we had previously agreed to during the information that we received after the planning commission. Correct? So, asking that that be addressed and are we supposed to just deal with it on our own with Thompson Thrift? Or, not sure how to, uh, handle that situation?
Sir, if I could get your name and.